Can now reconvene our meeting to open session. The Board has been in executive session since 5:45 to discuss contract negotiations and tenure recommendations. We could all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could have introductions?
Dave Hurst.
Chris Meyer.
Wendy Stamsen. Jody Monroe. Holly Dellenbaugh. Meredith Mararti.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Christine Beck.
And Judy Keeha.
And Willow Behrs, not here this evening, she had a personal matter. Do we have any PIG students with us tonight? Welcome. Your obligation is to stay until nine o'clock tonight or until the meeting is over, whichever comes first, and at that point you guys should come up and sign out. There's pieces of paper up here, and if you need a signature on anything that you have with you, just come see any of the board members. First up is approval of the minutes of our last meeting. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the November 20th, 2019, regular Board meeting.
So moved.
Saqah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Do we have anybody with us tonight from the Student Senate?
Hi, I'm Isabella Meritato. In Student Senate, this week, we have passed out the boxes for the holiday food drive at the high school. That will take place, I'm not sure the exact day, but it's one of the last few days before break. We have approved a bunch of clubs also this week in Student Senate, for example, Fashion Club and Volleyball Club. And the last thing is that we're working on making the courtyard more accessible to students so that there's a little outdoor space that students can go to and kind of enjoy the grass during the springtime. And two weeks ago, Student Senate met with Mr. Domel to talk about potential areas that we can have that and, you know, the logistics of all that. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody here tonight from the middle school?
Hello, my name's Amelia Kuhn. So, in the middle school right now, we just started our holiday food drive that is underway with all of our homerooms collecting food items. The program ends at the middle school next Thursday, December 12. Also, Student Council is holding a 7th and 8th grade social this Friday night during a social. Our lower gym is open for basketball and an inflatable obstacle course, and we have a DJ in the upper gym. The cost to a student is $5, and a portion of the proceeds will go towards purchasing gift cards for our holiday food drive program. The Student Council also sent 150 holiday cards to soldiers overseas thanking them for their service. And on Black Friday, members of our Helping Hands Committee and the High School Key Club assisted the Kiwanis Club with their Bells of Life campaign at Crossgate Mall. All proceeds go towards the Children's Emergency Center, Albany Med, and in four hours, the students raised over $700. BCMS students voted on the November Hero Honoree, and the winner is Rosa Parks. And her quote was, "Each person must live their life as a model for others." BCMS would like to thank Mr. Greg Jones for his permission to use his artwork for our portrait of Ms. Parks. Once her portrait and quote are framed, Ms. Parks will be displayed in our front hallway with our other past honorees. And lastly, we would like, next week, we have our 6th, 7th, and 8th grade concerts on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And I have a picture of, or I have the picture of Rosa Parks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is our superintendent's report.
I think the high school Student Senate, you guys have plenty of time to plan for the courtyard with the two feet of snow we have out there. No, no rush. Just a quick construction update, we are still on track for opening the library after the holiday break, so when students come back and staff come back, it'll be ready to go unless something unforeseen happens, but we're still on track. The cafeteria here in the kitchen is all functioning, up and going. There's a few minor things that are being finished up, but that's flowing nicely, and the auditorium is still on track for spring completion, so. And then we're currently trying to get some of the work done that is in the bond after hours, so some of the bathrooms in the high school are being shut down because they're being renovated. I know at Elsmere, they're working on a locker room area, they're starting to do that. So there's smaller jobs that are not disruptive to the school functioning during the day that are still ongoing. So, everything is going well, except for all the snow that took quite a bit to clear, and they're still working on. Also, a couple, the students from the middle school and high school mentioned the holiday caring and sharing program, so this is a program that all of our schools and departments participate in. We collect food items, and we also collect donations for gift cards to Hannaford that we provide to families. And next Saturday, the 14th, we'll have pickup here for families to come in. We're here from 8 to noon, I think. Last year, we've had about 150 families who participate in that, so we appreciate all the staff and students do to put it all together, and parents making the donations, and our high school students do a great job organizing everything, and I'll take some photos, it's amazing, all of the boxes that are throughout the cafeteria. It's really a great school-wide and community event. So I thank everyone who participates, and thanks to Kathy Johnston and her secretary Sherry, who do a lot of the organization involved in that, in the event, so. And that's my report.
Thank you. Next up is the Board Report. I just wanted to draw everybody's attention to the email that we got earlier today saying that Paper Pastries is going to be at the Delmar Farmer's Market, I think this coming, December 8th, this coming Saturday, and on the 15th, and they will be selling their holiday cards. And if you remember, we had a visit from them last year. So, in the email, there are some of the designs that they have put together for their holiday cards, and they look great.
They have a last minute, very nice gift card holder, so everybody gets gift cards for...
Great. So they will be there from 9:30 to noon the next two Saturdays. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share?
I just wanted to thank our maintenance crews and also our transportation for getting us through. The last two days have been, I'm sure, a lot of work for everybody, so I appreciate clearing the snow and getting our buses not only cleaned off, but through all of those roads that are not necessarily clean yet, so I do appreciate everyone's hard work.
Chris?
Okay. Just to echo what Meredith said, and then a couple of things. First of all, I love the fact that we now have the middle school here presenting as well for Student Council, that's tremendous, and, you know, if the two people that presented today are any reflection of who's on that, that's tremendous. To be that well spoken at that age is very impressive. Last night, I attended the, both the boys and the girls' basketball games here at the high school. We have two really good teams here this year. The girls were a little more successful than the boys, but both teams were excellent, so if you get a chance, come on out and support them. And then, two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, losing my mind here, we attended the Turkey Trot at Hammergrill, which is a great event every year. It's either a quarter mile, half mile, or full mile run, but the participation was through the roof. On a personal note, just to say how exceptional all the teachers are, my son, my oldest, has special needs, and, you know, for him to complete the course, we didn't know if he'd be able to do it, and so I just kind of was spying on him as he was going, and I looked over there, and his teacher was running with him the whole way. And supporting him and cheering him on, I think that's one of the reasons he finished, was because she was there with him the whole time. And it meant a lot to us, and it meant a lot to our son, so we're very grateful for that.
Thank you. Wendy?
I don't really have anything, but everybody should see this beautiful artwork of Rosa Parks that's going to go up in the middle school. It's really impressive, it's very pretty.
Next on our agenda is our presentation. We have an academic update. Oh, yeah.
So, thank you. Before I begin, I do want to take a moment to thank our supervisors, principals for being here tonight. They're really, you know, the instructional leaders that ensure that our students have, you know, a rigorous, robust academic program. They work very closely with the teachers. You know, I get to do sort of the presentation and work with them on the bigger picture items, but they're really the ones that are sort of day-to-day, working very closely with our teachers and students, and that is why our program is as successful as it is. So I thank them for being here tonight to support the presentation. So, as you know, we updated our goals over the last couple of years, and this one, our presentation tonight certainly supports the academic goal, but it really does hit at the other three goals as well. Each year, the Buffalo First releases its top 10 upstate schools, and for the third year in a row, we were ranked fifth, and those are based on test scores and graduation rates, essentially. So first, I'm going to talk about the testing program itself, 3 through 8, so I'm going to kind of chunk it. I'll talk a little bit about 3 through 5, and then I'll talk about 6 through 8, and maybe I'll pause for questions if that makes things easier, just kind of flag me down if that's what you prefer to do. But just a couple of reminders first, that the testing was completely revamped in 2018. They switched to a two-day design, so the results you'll see, some of our scale scores are, the numbers themselves look like they drastically changed, and that's because of the new design. The second thing is, last year, we participated in computer-based testing at the middle school for both ELA and math. And just to kind of give you a history on computer-based testing in the state, last year was really the third year of testing, so the first year, approximately 5% of the schools in the state participated. The following year, it was about 25%, and last year was pushing 45%. And the portal's still open for registration this year, but preliminary data is showing that it's going to somewhere in the 45% to 55% range. And most schools that are doing it, that have jumped on sort of as early adopters, are ones that have one-to-one programs, right? Because you can imagine having all of your students in a particular grade level test when every student doesn't have their own device is very problematic, right? So that's, those numbers will continue to increase as schools acquire more and more technology. The original goal for the state was for next year to be the year that every school in the state moved to CBT. They backed off that timeline slightly because schools, some schools still don't have the infrastructure necessary to pull this off. But we are expanding this year to computer-based testing for all of our grade levels, so all students in grades 3 through 8, in both math and ELA, will be testing using the computer-based testing platform. And it's interesting, in talking with schools that have already done this at the elementary level, you know, most, the apprehension comes from the adults, not the kids, right? And just, sort of as an anecdotal story, I push into elementary classrooms to teach math lessons, and I was in a second grade classroom at the beginning of the year, and my presentation involved, I was using some technology, and I had some sort of animations moving on the screen so kids could follow along the subtraction story we were doing. And at the end, the teacher asked me, you know, "How did you do that?" So I kind of explained it to her, and I could tell kids were sort of listening in, so I sort of joked with her, it's like, "And, you know, I just, I wasn't sure how to do this, so I just kind of, I had to ask for help, and I figured out how to do it yesterday." And the second grader looked at me and he was like, "Really?" And I'm like, "Yeah." And I'm like, "Why?" He's like, "Mr. de Tadatol is that last year." So, I mean, it's, that means the kid was a first grader, right? So they are far more adept at using the technology than we are, and, you know, the apprehension in terms of moving towards computer-based testing definitely comes from the adults and not the kids. And schools that have done this have said, you know, after they've gone through the process, they've had no issues from the kid end of things. It was more the teachers and the administration ahead of time just being nervous about like, "How are kids going to handle this?", and they've handled it fine. And I think you'll see with our results at the middle school, there's more apprehension in terms of doing the math on the computer, just because of having to show your work and draw things, and I think you'll see, our results in math actually went up at the middle school when we went to computer-based. And that just has not been the case with students showing their work. We've also done a lot of upfront prep with this. Students are practicing on the same platform that they'll be using. Last year, the middle school did it for the second half of the year. This year, the elementary, teachers have already started working with kids on the platform, so they'll be more than familiar with it before that day even comes. I see.
One of the specific concerns that I've heard with respect to the ELA component at the elementary level is with respect to typing, especially if you're having to type something, a writing piece, so I'm wondering if you have a plan?
So that's something we are working with the students, and just so you are aware, typing is actually part of the ELA standards, right? The ELA standards do require students, beginning in 3rd grade, start to develop typing proficiencies. So this is something that we need to be working on regardless of we went to a computer-based testing environment, and this is something that we've embedded within. So, three years ago, we developed K5 sort of technology learning standards where a lot of it's handled through the library program, but students are, each year, working more and more with typing, building their stamina, and being able to type more. So that, obviously, that's, the two concerns are, can they type the free response questions? And schools have reported that that has not been an issue for students, and then the math piece, which has also not proven to be a challenge for kids.
Can you speak to how children show their work?
In math?
Yeah.
So they have a drawing tool.
Okay.
So, basically, it's just a big drawing box, and they can use, if they have a touchscreen, they can obviously do it that way, which is the easier way of doing it, but most schools don't have that, and kids just use their mouse and draw whatever it is they need to draw. And again, this is one of the things, a bunch, the first year that, I forget, the school, they did it, they bought mice for all the kids because they figured they wouldn't be able to use a touchpad, and they realized after like two weeks that they basically wasted all their money because none of the kids were using the mouse, they were all using the touchpad. And they were able to draw whatever it was that they needed to draw without issue. Yeah.
Good. Is this our first year doing computerize ELA? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 3 through 5. Middle school did 6 through 8.
Did you notice that there was an increase or a decrease in time that it took to take the test because they're able to type quicker than they would writing? I didn't know if there's...
I don't think any schools have reported that.
Yeah, they haven't really, and I would say, I mean...
They got rid of the time factor, so that's not an issue, but I just didn't know if they showed that...
And the number of questions have decreased, so it's something we can kind of keep an eye on, but we have a need to extend time.
Okay.
That's for sure. So, just looking at our overall performance, so our ELA results did drop quite a bit from the prior year, and I'll speak to that a little bit more in depth in a bit. Our math results, we went up a little bit, but our standing within the top 10 basically stayed about the same. And if you look at in suburban council, same thing, we were, ELA, we dropped sort of the middle of the pack, we were towards the top last year, and math, we essentially stayed about the same. So just as a quick reminder, there are four levels when you're looking at the performance on these assessments, 1, 2, 3, 4. Basically, 4 means you're exceeding expectations, 3, you're meeting expectations, 2, you're slightly below, and 1, you're far well below. So, grade 3, so one of the things I started doing a few years ago was, when we look at these, it's kind of hard to know what a proficiency percentage looks like unless you kind of look at it relative to other schools. So in grade 3, you can see that our proficiency did dip a little bit. We're still essentially, you know, only 11% of the state outperformed us both in proficiency and in mean scale score. And as you know, grade 3 proficiency, this is one of the areas that we've identified in our strategic plan, is one of our top areas that we're looking at, is increasing proficiency at grade 3, because obviously, if you're not proficient at grade 3 in reading, that's going to impact your ability to read moving forward in all content areas, and actually, it does have a negative impact on your math results as well. So that's really, really an important area to focus on, and I'll speak, after I get through 5th grade, I think I'll speak a little bit more in depth about some of the things we've been talking about. So in grade 4, and also I mentioned our participation, our opt-out rates remained fairly consistent from the prior year. The one thing though I will mention is that the state does not report on sort of the profile of the students that are opting out, so we have some students that tested prior that are no longer testing, and so one thing that does impact our numbers is sort of a 2 to 1 ratio of kids that are, used to test proficient, that no longer take the test versus kids that were not proficient. So for every, sort of, 3 kids that don't take the test now, 2 used to be proficient and 1 did not. So obviously, with a higher percentage of being proficient kids not taking the test, that has a negative impact on our results. So 4th grade, we remained fairly consistent, someone of the 3rd, around 92nd percentile. 5th is where we start to see the drop, and this is where, again, it starts to become sort of a compounding factor when you look at the students that were not successful in grade 3, or even the ones that were sort of barely successful, they start to fall farther and farther behind as they move down the road. So, you know, this is obviously an area of concern for us. I've met with Andy Baker, ELA supervisor, he's met with his departments, and we've already identified some things to look at at the elementary level, but some things, just to give you an idea of, you know, we don't have a solidified plan in place yet, but these are areas that we're looking at. More intensive sustained and systematics phonics work, so we're piloting a new phonics program, K2, with some of our grade levels. Just reading, general knowledge, so in other words, you know, looking at just increasing the amount of reading, not just in literature, but in history and science, to build knowledge and build up your vocabulary. Explicit vocabulary instruction, more discussion in classrooms, because it's through that purposeful discussion, through that discourse, that you're able to solidify in your head what it is that you're reading, and then finally, just more expanded writing instruction, because, as you know, reading and writing kind of go hand in hand. So these are all areas that we're looking at. And again, if you take a look at the numbers, as bad as proficiency numbers are, you can see, we're still relatively standing with the other schools, you know, we don't really drop off all that much, right? We go from the 92nd percentile, yeah, to the 87th, but the percentages drop drastically. So it's not just a problem here, it's a problem sort of universally that at grade 5, things seem to drop off. But nonetheless, we've identified some areas that we can look at at earlier grades that will have a positive impact on later grades. The middle school, the opt-out rate did increase over the elementary level, which has been the case for the past three years, but you can see that we had a drastic drop off in both grade 6, 7, and 8. And looking at some things, obviously, to figure out all the problems at once is kind of complicated, but we did, there is one area that we were able to identify right away, and that is, on the exams themselves, there's only about 45 points total that can be grabbed on the exam, and all three levels have a 4-point question that it's considered a pair reading passage. So the students read two different stories, and then they have to pull information from each, kind of put them together to answer some questions. And on average, at those three grade levels, and actually, grades 5, 6, 7, 8, our students are only scoring 1 out of 4. So there's one area right there that we're leaving a lot of points on the table, so that just gives you an example of how we're using data to try to pinpoint some deficiencies in our program.
How did that compare to the other school districts in the drop?
Yeah, we've dropped substantially, you can see...
That's the percentile rank.
Our percentile rank, so we went from basically being, you know, we're only, you know, 15 to 20% of the state is doing better than us to 25% of the state.
So it's not possibly a testing issue for that particular year?
No, that's why I said, there's multiple issues.
Because to go from 93rd to 72nd, or...
No, so there's a couple of things at play, so there's some of the issues that we talked about. We've identified some curriculum things we can work on. There are some, again, though, if you look at our opt-out rates, especially in 8th grade, 24% opting out, but again, a 2 to 1 ratio of kids that used to be proficient versus ones that aren't. So those things all play into it, I'm not using those, I don't want to even go there because I think that's making excuses. I'm working very closely with Andy Baker, and he's working closely with the middle school department, and we're trying to identify areas that we can certainly work on to improve the instruction that would help us.
Was there a big curriculum change from one, and then we invested so much in RTI too, so it just doesn't seem...
Like I said, I mean, the one, we're still looking through the data, but the one glaring thing was that 4-point question. We were leaving, like I said, 3 out of the 4 points on the table, and when you only have 40-something points total, that has a huge impact. So, yes, we're very concerned, and yes, we're looking, but we, you know, we're not going to have answers overnight, but that...
No.
Just to give you an idea of some trend data, and this also speaks to sort of the variability within the tests themselves, that's why I kind of, I do like to look at this. This follows basically the same group of kids over time, and you can see that for certain groups of kids, I mean, they might only have two years worth of data, but some of the longer lines are better to look at because those are kids that have tested for six consecutive years, and you can see there's a little bit of bouncing around, but the general trend in ELA is kids are going down, right? So there's something that we're not doing that's allowing a cohort of kids that's starting at a point A and sliding down further along the way, right? The gap is getting larger, so this is something that we have to take a careful look at. And this is, again, goes back to, it really goes all the way back to grade 3, right? If you're just reaching proficiency at grade 3, that's probably not going to be enough to sustain them and have them grow further, right? We have to figure out ways to be more rigorous in what it is that we're trying to do.
Is there any correlation with the fact that we focus more on the reading aspect with that cohort of kids versus understanding the context of what they were reading? So they actually are proficient in actually reading it, but they don't understand what they're actually reading?
So that's another piece in pulling the test apart that we have to look more carefully at, is that it's not just a reading test, it's a reading and writing test. So like I said, one of the areas we're finding, so some of the deficiencies actually point more towards the writing piece than the reading piece.
Okay.
Yes, for sure. Okay, math, again, our percentiles mean they stayed fairly consistent in grade 3, essentially the 90th percentile, grade 4, 91st, slight dip in grade 5, but then back to the middle school, we're back up into the 90th again. And if you go back a few years, our middle school math numbers were actually quite low. We made quite a few adjustments about four years ago, and our numbers have consistently grown since then, and I think you'll see that a little bit in the trend report. Just a reminder that when you look at grade 7, we do have a cohort of kids that don't take it because they're taking the Regents exam, so the initial numbers were in the 94th percentile, and that's essentially with almost 30% of our kids not even taking the test. If you do include those students that took the Regents, that our percentage would jump up all the way to 77. Similar with 8th grade, we have two groups of students really not taking the test, single and double advanced, so you can see down below, only 40% of our students even take the test, right? That being said, a lot of other schools are in similar situations, so while our proficiency number is quite low, again, it's only 40% of our students are even taking it, our relative standing did drop quite a bit, so that's another area. It's tricky though when only 40% of your kids are taking a test. We made some adjustments back after 2015, we actually found a couple of curricular areas that we were spending way too much time on, and a couple areas we weren't spending enough time, and we made adjustments, and you can see that 16, 17, 18, we made pretty good gains. Little bit of dip this year, so we'll have to see if that's a trend or just a, it could just be a one-year kind of fluky thing too. However, when you put the 8th graders in that took the Regents exam, then it does rebound back up nicely to 70%, because the bottom line is, you know, we've got a third of our students taking Regents exams as 8th graders, and they're all scoring, they're pretty much all scoring 85 or better on that exam, so that has a huge impact on our 7th and 8th grade results. And I do, so I think you can see too that a concern, again, was with math, doing math on the computer. Our 6th grader results went up... Our sixth grade results went up, our seventh grade results went up, and our eighth grade results did dip slightly. But again, the number of students taking it, I'm not, it's difficult to say whether the computer had any impact on that or not. And then, this is sort of the opposite of the trend we saw with the ELA. The ELA, most cohorts over time were sort of trending downward. Here, while there are some dips, I think the overall trend is somewhat on the upward So the one area I do like to highlight is students with disabilities. Because when you, again, when you look at raw numbers, it's like, oh, only thirty percent of our kids are proficient, but our special ed staff does an amazing job with our kids. You know, thirty percent sounds like an awful number for proficiency, but when you compare it to the rest of the top schools, we're always right, right at the top. So it's just a testament to the, that the work that our special education teachers do with our students, they're not looking to just get done by, they really are pushing these kids towards being proficient on assessments that some general ed students struggle to be proficient at. So for ELA, we're at thirty percent, and then for math, thirty-six. So again, when you just looked at those numbers, you might say, wow, that's not very good, but when you compare it to the state as a whole, and then as this top ten group, it's pretty impressive what our special education teachers are doing. Science, our numbers really haven't changed at all in the last, since they've offered a test. We're always right around ninety-seven percent for grade four, and we're, you know, hovering around ninety percent for grade eight. So that's the three-through-eight testing. Any remaining questions on three-through-eight? Okay. Regents exams, so I will point out, this is part of our strategic plan as well. Our passing rates are phenomenal for Regents exams. We don't feel like that's a measure we should really be focusing on, we're focusing more on the mastery rate, which is students getting eighty-five percent on the exam or higher. So just kind of keep that in mind as we go through. Because you can see, I mean, our students are performing extremely well on Regents exams, right? You know, our averages are all eighty or better, in many cases, our class averages are even at the mastery level, which is phenomenal. So to put that in perspective, I will take a closer look at the mastery rates, kind of how we compare to the others. And I have to do this on a one-year lag because other school data is not available to me yet for this past year. But, so you can see that where we are in terms of those top ten schools, so if you recall, the Algebra I was an area of concern that I talked about last year, and actually this past year, we've raised that almost twelve percentage points. That mastery rate is now up in the, almost forty-five percent. So we're pushing towards the top. After just some changes in one year, we've actually been able to rise, raise that up quite a bit. So next year's slide, you'll see our algebra bar be much, much higher. So the numbers in parentheses rank where we are in that top ten. Because it can be deceiving, you look at the line, you're like, oh, we're kind of in the middle, but like, the geometry exam, we're ranked two out of ten, even though our, the top school is just way outperforming everyone else. And then when we look at the Regents exams based on the old standards, you can see every single one of our exams, our class average, our average student is performing at a mastery level or higher, right? On average. That's unheard of, right? That's phenomenal that, on average, our students are scoring eighty-five or better. And that bears out here, you can see that we're ranked in the top three for all but one of the exams. And on the chemistry exam, the numbers are really, really tight. So this one is kind of the reverse effect of what happened on the other one, we're ranked sixth, but we're above the middle of that overall bar, right? So our students are performing at a very, very high level. If you look back here, again, eighty-five is the average, right?
How are these comparative to last year, or the year before? Are they consistent?
So for the, for these 2005 standard exams, they're pretty consistent. For the, the common core exams, our ELA's been very consistent, and each year, over the last five years, we've increased our Algebra geometry and Algebra II results. And then this is probably the program that we should be extremely proud of, and it sort of is counter to some of the results we see at the elementary level, which is what worries me sometimes about some of the, putting too much focus on, you know, any one, any one measure, which some people tend to do, right? Because you're going to see that we have sixty percent of our students getting college credit on some of these, overall, on at least one exam, but yet, only fifty percent are proficient back in elementary school in a standard, that doesn't, those two things don't mesh, right? So for example, if we take a look here, we have four hundred seventy-seven students total that took exams, almost a thousand exams taken. So if you figure on average, three credits, I mean, that's like three thousand college credits our kids are getting, on average, right? Total. Some are four credits, some are three credits, we'll just go with three. So it's almost three thousand college credits. And just to kind of give you an idea, the way the scoring works, most colleges take three or better, some of the more selective ones only take four or better. But it's almost like thinking of a five as an A, a four as a B, three as a C, and so, if, but in those terms. But you can see many of our courses, our averages are above a four. So on average, these scores are very, very good. You can also see we have students that challenge exams, like, so this year we do offer English Language and COP. Last year we did not, but we had a student challenge it anyways. And you'll see a couple of other exams that students challenge. Just to give you an idea of where that is, so we're the orange bar, New York State is blue, and the entire world is green, and we are far outperforming, I mean, on average, we're outperforming by like one full number, right? By one. So some other exams, similar, here are math and science exams, again, performing at a very, very high level. And when you look at comparisons to both New York and globally, the gap closes a little bit. We do, there are some areas that I think we can do a little bit better at, and these are things that we're looking at. Calculus BC, I feel like is an area that we can improve on. And one of the things I'll say is some of, the math exams are very technology-intensive, and that is, that's, fifty percent of the exam really is using technology, so that's an area that we're taking a look at to see if there's some ways that we can help our students perform better on those pieces. Computer Science A was new, within the last couple of years, and you can see, even though it's a brand-new course, we are outperforming both the state and the world, which is great to see. And for our languages, you can see, like, so Chinese, obviously we don't have a Chinese program, but students challenge that exam. And here, we're, you know, slightly outperforming, I won't look at Chinese because it's two self-selected students, but Spanish, slightly outperforming, French, slightly underperforming, but nonetheless, anything above a three is considered very good. I think this slide paints the best picture, because it talks about sort of the equity of access to these exams, right? Many schools have selective processes by which students are able to take these exams. So in other words, you know, if you want to take AP US History, you better have gotten eighty-five or better on some prior course, right? If you want to take AP Calculus, if you didn't get an eighty-five or better in pre-calculus, you're not taking. We don't have that, right? We have open enrollment, students, as long as they've taken the prerequisite classes, they can enroll in these courses. So our participation rate is almost sixty percent, right? Meaning, three out of every five seniors has taken at least one AP course, right? Not only that, with open enrollment, with students being able to self-select these courses, look at the gap between the blue and the green, right? That's really the important part. Not only are we just, we're allowing pretty much anyone that has taken the prerequisite courses to take these classes at the AP level, they're successful, right? We're the only school that has over fifty percent of our students that take the exams, also pass them. So fifty percent, fifty percent of our seniors. So we have fifty percent of our seniors are walking out of high school with college credit, right? The next closest school is under forty percent. And then look at the gap in the bars, right? So Saratoga allows almost the same number of students to take the exam as we do, but look at their passing rate, right? It's much, much that gap. You don't want a gap at all between the blue and the green. You want every kid that takes the exam to be successful on that exam. So not, we allow the most students to do it, but we're getting the most to pass as well. And that, I think that's volumes for just the commitment our teachers have and the commitment our kids have to being successful. And this bears itself out in our graduation rates as well. Again, you wouldn't think we'd be able to get our graduation rates to go much higher, but every year, they, we get them to go up a little bit more, right? So our graduation rate is ninety-six point seven percent. And two-thirds of our students are walking out with Advanced Regents diplomas, which means they're accessing as many of the Regents exams. They're not just taking the five required, they're taking far more than that to be successful. So what are some things that we're working on? As I mentioned when we went through the testing data, we're looking at all of that data, and we're trying to figure out if we have curricular gaps. We're working with students who are AIS and RTI program, and again, using technology where appropriate, I can't stress that more than enough, it's where appropriate. We're reviewing some of our programs again, Lab School, World Languages and ELL, Library Media Sciences. We're continuing to rework our local assessments to ensure that students are ready to meet the New York State learning standards. I think, this is something I mentioned at the outset, is that we are very collaborative in the way that we plan. It's a team approach. So New York likes to implement new standards quite often, so we are in the process of implementing the new social studies standards, the new science standards. Just when you thought we were done implementing math and ELA standards, we have new ones that kick in next year, so we'll be implementing those. Fortunately, there's very little changes between the Common Core standards and the Next Generation standards. And then also, again, we're going to look at ways to be innovative with our students through, be it through technology, project-based learning, inquiry-based learning. And you'll see, again, you approved a couple of months ago, some of our new course offerings at the high school. Every year, we increase the number of offerings here, and just to create as diverse of an experience for students as we can. And it's not just in the core areas, I mean, if you look at our art electives, if you look at our family consumer science electives, our business electives, we just keep expanding those programs and offering students with more and more opportunities to just expose themselves to areas that they might be interested in, right? I really do think we try to create a program that allows kids to follow their passions, whatever that happens to be. And I, I just can't speak enough about the work that our supervisors and principals and teachers do to ensure that students have this very rich experience. So I know I've answered questions along the way, but if you have any final ones, I'd be happy to answer those as well.
I did, I was happy to hear you were talking about expanded writing instruction in curriculum. I think we've all heard, you know, nationwide, colleges have, and professionals have noticed a decrease in the level of and quality of writing of high school graduates. And so I, I do think that is a very important thing that I hope we can concentrate on. At the lower levels, obviously, the testing results speak for that, but also at the upper levels, I did notice that the AP scores, while they were all great, the English Language and Composition was the lowest of all of the AP scores. So I think certainly expanded writing curriculum is an important key, and I think, I appreciate the fact that you phoned in on that.
And it's not just expanded writing for the sake of the English course, but it's expanded writing in different genres, right?
Absolutely.
So if you look at our social studies results on AP exams, those are, I mean, we're almost averaging a five, right? And that's as writing-intensive, if not more writing-intensive than the English exam. So it's a matter of not just of making sure kids are becoming more proficient in their writing for specific, but in multiple areas, right? Becoming more technic, being able to write technically, right? Because the way that you would write in science class, from a technical aspect, is different than the way you would attack something in a social studies class. So it's not just the amount of writing, but it's also the types of writing. I couldn't agree more.
Also, I know we've put a lot of effort into the writing and reading program. Obviously, we've staffed RTI extremely well over the last several years, so we can improve the reading, and hopefully that will help with the writing aspect of it. And it is possible, maybe it was a fluke year for whatever reason, because it was such a big drop, just to keep the focus on it, and maybe at the elementary level, look at the types of homework that's being given out to, to look at, what writing assignments they're getting, and making sure when they come back, they're corrected. That's one thing over the years, having three kids, is there's not a lot of feedback with regards to writing pieces and saying, you need to work on your sentence structure or grammar, or helping with structure of paragraphs, so maybe that type of a focus.
And that's actually an area that Andy's worked very closely with his department last year.
Is the idea of providing feedback, is having kids write more?
If you don't receive substantial feedback on their writing, it's, doesn't really do you much good, right? Because you could just be practicing poor writing over and over and over again, and if you never have feedback, then you're not going to improve your writing. So that is something actually we met at the end of last year, and we now have sort of common expectations, serves as a type of feedback that we would expect for our English.
And I can just speak to it from having a student in Lab School from years ago. My son graduated JMU last year, 2018, and he got an award for one of the best thesis papers in his economics department. And it took a cohort, I think of five teachers at the time, that they would, two of them would review each draft several times. And I know there, it's not similar like that in Lab School now, but that seemed to be a program that definitely worked, where there were drafts, rough copies, and a lot of feedbacks. So just to bring that forward, maybe, and when you're looking at it.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, recognition of visitors on an agenda item. If we have any visitors with us this evening who would like to speak on an agenda item, now would be the time to come forward. Next, item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through three.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Just say a thank you to the BOU for the donation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through three.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through seven.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through five.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item seven, recognition of visitors on a non-agenda item. At this point, if we have any visitors who would like to speak on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come forward. And if you could just come up to the microphone and state your name.
My name is Abba Canning. I'm here today with a group of parents with children who receive special education services. I have a four-year-old son who is in his second year in an integrated preschool with related services provided by the district. I've been very impressed by our experiences with the district and by the amazing gains that my son has made. However, in talking with other parents with slightly older children, I am concerned about program offerings for next year. That is why I and a group of other parents with young children have decided to speak to you today. First of all, I would like to say thank you for providing a forum for us as parents to express our concerns. The following is a statement that was jointly written by members of our newly-formed The following is a statement that was jointly written by members of our newly-formed group. We represent a group of Bethlehem parents of children with IEPs. Our group is composed primarily of parents with elementary-age children currently in districts, some in regular education, primary skills, intensive skills, and preschool classrooms, as well as parents who have opted out of district due to concerns about program offerings. We firmly believe that inclusion is the best option for the majority of children with special education needs. We are concerned that the BCSD offers inadequate options for children per the Federal Individuals with Disabilities Education Act to remain in the least restrictive environment. When compared with nearby communities in the capital region, Bethlehem has fewer co-taught classrooms than other similarly-sized districts, which leads to a segregated model for children with special education needs. We know that peer models are imperative for growth and development when looking at the whole child. The impact of peer models is just as important as therapeutic intervention or educational instruction. Early childhood is the most critical time for educational development, and our district needs to do more. The past decade's worth of research says that an inclusive environment is best for children, those with disabilities and the typically developing alike. Segregated children at such a young age can be detrimental to their social, emotional, and academic growth. We would like to see more options between the typical classroom and the self-contained classrooms. One co-taught classroom for five elementary schools in a district that has 300 to 400 students per grade level is insufficient. Co-taught classrooms should be a priority in all grade levels and at more elementary schools within our district. New York State regulation states that, quote, "The placement of an individual student with a disability in the least restrictive environment shall, number one, provide the student, provide the special education needed by the student; two, provide for education of the student to the maximum extent appropriate to the needs of the student with other students who do not have disabilities; and three, be as close as possible to the student's home," end quote. Children should be able to go to their home school with their siblings and neighborhood friends. They shouldn't be segregated and forced to a different school simply because they have special needs. Even worse, a child, even worse, to change a special ed child's elementary school when they reach a certain grade because the district can no longer accommodate their needs is not acceptable. Can you imagine telling a regular ed student's parents they have to switch elementary schools because you can no longer accommodate them? Special education students need stability and consistency the most, and they are receiving the opposite. We realize that special education programming is expensive, and that budgets for next year are already being planned. That is why we know it is critical to express our concerns before the spring, when classrooms and teachers have already been assigned. We also know that early elementary interventions are crucial foundations for academic success and can save the district money in the future if children are given access to proper educational environments. Bethlehem has consistently been rated one of the top school districts in the region, which is why many of us moved to this community. As taxpayers and parents, we want and deserve the best for our typical and our special-needs children. Asking for inclusion isn't asking for a favor. It is asking for what is morally, legally, and ethically right for all students. The Bethlehem Board of Education's mission is to, quote, "Educate and prepare all students to reach their potential, discover their purpose, and be engaged members of their community," end quote. We know that children of all abilities, if given the proper support, can attain these goals. The district needs to prioritize the inclusion of children with special needs to the fullest extent possible. Thank you very much for your consideration, and we have some follow-up questions.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Casey, and our follow-up questions are, how do you decide how many co-taught classrooms are in each grade level?
If you do have specific questions for special ed, the best thing to do would be to reach out directly to special ed with those questions. Or you could leave them with us this evening, and we can make sure that they get there.
Okay. We have two others. We just would like to know the timeline for deciding, and what are the prerequisites for deciding who is a good candidate for a co-taught classroom?
And again, if you want to leave those questions with us, we can make sure they get passed on to the right person to answer those for you. And if you'd also like to leave a copy of your statement with us, we'd be happy to have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just looking to see if we have any other visitors on a non-agenda item.
Seeing no one, item eight, future meetings and events. Our next board meeting is on Wednesday, December 18th, here at the high school, starting at 7:00, anticipating an executive session starting at 6:00. The meeting after that, Wednesday, January 8th, at the high school, starting at 7:00, anticipating an executive session at 6:00. And on Monday, January 13th, we currently have scheduled at 5:30 PM an audit committee meeting, and at 6:30 PM, a facilities committee meeting, both here at the high school. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Show move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.